Item 8B, which is AB 2397, presentation, discussion, possible action regarding the proposed extension to the alternative expenditure limitation known as home rule. Justin?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. I'm here at the request of Council to look a little further into the potential impacts of a home rule election. We'll cover what happens in the event that home rule passes, but Council's interest was really what happens in the event of a home rule failure. So, we're gonna look at a number of things tonight. The first of those is just a scenario where the status quo is maintained in the case where a home rule fails, which really means living with the state-imposed expenditure limit. So, we'll go into that in some detail, and I'll attempt to explain kind of the level of purview of basically building a very rough budget from the ground up, utilizing existing programs, and I'll explain a little further as we dig in exactly, you know, at what level of detail that analysis was done. And then, two, a couple of other options would be for some future election question. That could be something like a permanent base adjustment, either in as early as the November cycle, and we have some information to convey to you about what it would take to do that, even more recent than what is included in the agenda bill. And then, other, another possibility would be a one-time override, and both of those function a little differently. So, we're gonna cover all of that tonight, and then seek direction from Council on anything else you'd like to see staff do from here.
Okay.
Okay, so, just to cover some of the basics, especially those who might be watching from home, home rule basically authorizes the city to set its own budget limits. Without home rule, cities and towns basically adhere to a formula for spending that was established in 1980, adjusted for population change and inflation. To maintain the authority, and I apologize about the way it's written in the agenda bill, says that home rule is required every four years. What that's really meant to say is to maintain home rule authority, home rule must be voted and approved every four years. So, obviously, it is not mandatory to pursue home rule, and in fact, there are other options, including living with the state-imposed limit, a permanent base adjustment, or a one-time override. But in order to maintain that home rule authority, it's basically approved and lasts for four years, and then to extend it, it must be voted on and approved again. And just to make sure it's very clear, you'll see reference to alternative expenditure limit, which does equal home rule, same thing. So, we've covered this in very broad terms. What we're gonna attempt to do here in a second is dig down a little deeper, but in very broad terms, we have a projected budget of 49.5 million in fiscal year '20. That begins July 1, calendar year '19, okay? So, roughly a year from today. The state-imposed limit, we have learned, will be set at 13.5 million for Sedona for that year. Based on the analysis that was done, which includes forecasting some existing expenditures, there's an estimated 10.8 million that are excluded from the limit, totally separate from the calculation, and I'll discuss that in a little more detail here in a second. But what that really means in the broadest terms is that we'd be cutting 25.2 million from the projected budget to conform to what would be the state-imposed limit and the estimated exclusions that are included in that forecast. Make sense? Okay. So, one of the reasons that we're doing this analysis is because there's really a lot more nuance within the exercise than just looking at 49.5, which is a projected budget. You'll note, as you've seen in previous years, that our projected expenditures are higher than what we actually spend in a year. We've talked about reasons for that, but primarily, it's because the state requires that once you set a limit, you never go over it. So, you know, we have basically provided for contingencies and other things, and we're always estimating large areas of expenses, especially our capital improvements plan, where, you know, 12-plus months in advance, we're speculating a little bit on what projects will be started, what projects will be finished, et cetera. But in any regard, it's important to note that those budgeted numbers are conservative compared to what is the likely spending even within that budget year. But it's also true that there are nuances in other areas of these numbers, including the exclusion, so we'll talk about that. So, what I've done, in really kind of a short timeframe, recognizing that our normal budget process spans numerous months, we have input from a citizens group, certainly each department evaluates programs, et cetera, et cetera. We have priorities established by Council, and all of those things over the course of, you know, five, six months. And what this is, is much, much different. This is within a couple of weeks and really dedicating a number of hours to an exercise of reviewing some of those numbers and trying to look at the budget from the perspective of what is most critical or required to be preserved, and what is more discretionary, and what kinds of cuts could you apply to programs to basically conform to the state-imposed limit. So, kind of emphasizing that we're starting from zero, rather than starting from the 49.5 that we just acknowledged as a budget number and not a likely actual number anyway. So, we're starting at zero, building up, instead of starting from the projected expenses and cutting down. I think the appropriate approach to this is to address the exclusions first, because they are excluded from the limit. So, you take care of those, and then you start to look at programs and positions that are required by statute or other regulation. You may not even be aware of some of those. Address critical health, safety, welfare programs. Third, critical support services. Fourth, you know, those are things that not every customer or citizen necessarily sees as a service, but are nevertheless necessary to, you know, keep the organization running and to provide those services. And then, all other operation and capital needs last. So, I'm wanting to be transparent with the assumptions that are kind of built in as I go through this prioritization. I'll emphasize again, this is not a plan, it's not a proposed budget. There would be something like the process we always go through to come up with an actual budget. This is just from the perspective of me, with some input from our team, on, you know, what would be the most rational prioritization, and what does it look like if you try to adjust those programs in conformance with the state-imposed limit. A little more about methodology. In most cases, I'm using fiscal year '19 budget numbers. In part, that's because the FY forecast already includes some inflationary factors. So, using numbers in the budget that you just approved seems most rational as a way to exclude those inflationary factors that would likely not be built into a budget if, in fact, home rule failed and we were deciding to stick with the state-imposed limit. I mentioned that I evaluated individual programs. So, rather than looking at the total budget and just looking at, again, the 49.5 and, you know, cutting back down to 24-something, instead, I looked at individual programs within funds and within departments to try to evaluate the appropriateness of reductions. And it's very different even within, say, a department like police, where dispatch functions very differently than patrol, and you'll see that in some of the proposed reductions. I've applied at least a 5% reduction to all programs, just as a way to kind of come up with a factor for conservatism. I'll say that in evaluating that, you know, some of that is probably not possible without actually reducing costs. We have some programs that are really pretty strictly limited to payroll. Those positions are filled, we know the cost of those positions, and so as we project those numbers, there's not a lot of conservatism built in. But in other areas, there is some. So, again, at least a 5% reduction across the board as a way to try to take out anything on the operational side of the budget that may not, that may be the conservatism that's built in. Again, you know, sometimes we have vacancies and things like that that create savings that you can't anticipate exactly where they are, but it's safe to assume a 5% reduction. And then, as I looked at some of those programs, I tried to evaluate at very least the kind of general ratio between payroll expenses and supplies and services. When those supplies and services were a significant portion of the program costs, I went in and looked at the detail to determine how much, especially in a department like IT, where a big part of their budget is hardware and software, but out of that, how much is attributable to replacing computers, and how much is attributable to, say, maintaining a license for a program that we would presumably keep. And that was really just a way of kind of getting a quick check on, well, do I think this department could be cut 30% or 50%? You know, if there were a lot of maintenance, replacement, refresh kinds of costs, I assume that those would be deferred, okay? Now, that, I want to acknowledge, that's a short-term strategy, so if the question was what would a budget look like where we were forever going to stay within the state-imposed limit, it would be different than what I'm about to propose. This says, hey, if we were planning on replacing a computer, and we don't have to, the one we're using is still working, let's assume we don't replace it. And that works in some places and not others, because some of those costs, you know, when an AC unit goes down, for instance, you typically have to perform the repairs, especially in, you know, Arizona summertime. I excluded internal charges, so that's something that we do as a means of whole-cost accounting, so that we know the total cost of a program, including the support services that are provided. But for purposes of just looking at cuts to actual program expenditures, there are no internal services included, and then costs surrounded for simplicity of analysis. Questions so far? Okay. So, I want to talk a little bit first about the exclusions. I mentioned that's a good place to start. I want everybody to see what the breakdown of those numbers are. Again, total's about 10.8 million. Significant portion of that is debt service. Interest earned, the $614,000. The good news there is that's money that's really just free and clear. You know, we're allowed to spend our interest proceeds, and they're not subject to the limit. So, those can really be applied just about anywhere at the end of the day. Contributions, funds from the state, and then down below with these IGA contributions, I put an asterisk, because while those things are excludable, they likely mean some other encumbrance of dollars that are subject to the state-imposed limit. So, let me tell you what I mean. This $242,000 is for contributions, sponsorships, things that might come during a special event or something. Well, so you're assuming you have the special event in order to even receive that contribution. These funds from the state, I know, are tied to our improvement of the Y intersection, but require a 50% match. So, it's great that these funds are here. We want grant money, and it's great that grant money is excluded. But in the case where you have to match it, where it's only 50% of the total project, if we don't commit 13, or sorry, 1.395 million in the other area of the budget that's subject to the limit, you don't get to spend this. Does that make sense? So, there's kind of a catch-22. And in a weird way, you might get to the point where you say, we can't afford to spend the free money, because it obligates other funds, and doing so has an impact on what's left for operations. So, that's important to know. Same thing with the IGA contributions, and in this case, that is a contract with Coconino County for response to the canyon. Well, you know, we would have to evaluate in a situation where the police department budget was revised, if we were able to respond to those calls. If we weren't, then needless to say, there wouldn't be reimbursement for those services. So, again, just pointing out that there are some nuances within this amount total. The internal service charges, this is basically accounting for, I don't want to say a double counting, but when you have internal service charges that are applied to another department, say wastewater. Wastewater relies on IT services, HR, finance, you name it, and that's another fund. So, that fund basically pays for those services, right? Well, all the original costs of those services, the finance, the IT, the HR, already exist in the general fund. Those costs are not excluded. What is excluded is when the wastewater buys those services. Buying those services provides a revenue that offsets the expense in the general fund, but it doesn't otherwise provide an ability to provide the service itself. Does that make sense? It's, these costs, all of these internal service charges that are being paid for are provided for in, say, the general fund, and those costs are subject to the state-imposed limit. So, all this does is make sure that we're not burdened additionally by, say, the wastewater paying for some of those services that are already paid for, you know, provided for in the general fund.
Can I ask you a question?
Please.
The HERF funds to be spent would require we have engineers and staff, so is that not, in a way, a contingent?
Yes.
Money as well?
In a way, it is, but to be honest, some of those projects can be straightforward to the point where, unlike maybe a more complicated capital project that requires a lot of oversight, you could levy a contract that would require some oversight, but let's say it's for a road overlay. Most of that cost, the vast majority, could be, you know, contained totally within this source. You'd need a little bit of staff, but I'm trying to differentiate between something like that and the 1.4 roughly, that needs to be matched at, you know, 100%.
Thank you.
So, you're right. HERF, this is streets money, so good news again, you know, we're able to provide some of those street rehab projects, although, as you'll see later in the budget, it's not nearly enough on its own. So, we still need to look at how many of our discretionary dollars that are subject to the state-imposed limit would we need to spend to maintain our streets if that's a priority. Couple of bullets here, just to cover. Most of that, I think, I've explained. You know, the $1.6 million, the asterisk sources, have some sort of other encumbrance or contingency, if you will, before they can be spent, so they shouldn't be assumed to be given. And then, down at the bottom, there's 1.56 that I think it's appropriate to think of as, you know, providing for existing services, offsetting costs that we have, if you will, to provide operational services, you know, not things like debt service, but building a road. Or again, the $614,000 could be spent to support police or any other service. So, that's what I think your source is that's free and clear, that helps you accomplish operational goals. But that's a small percentage of the 10.8 overall. With me so far?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Oops, I'm over here. Okay. I mentioned that the next thing we would do is look at required programs. That includes our wastewater ops and capital costs. City clerk is actually one of those positions that we're required to have. We are required to have some kind of municipal court. Stormwater quality, some may not know that we have a permit for that. In fact, recently, we had an audit of some of our system, which I'll talk about in a second. So, I've included fiscal year '19 total costs, so you know what those are. Again, that's exclusive of internal services, and in some cases, if there was a really unique one-time cost, I might have even excluded that, because what we're looking at is, from an operational perspective, what does it look like to maintain what you need of these programs? I applied these adjustments, again, at maybe a 30,000-foot view versus the 50,000-foot view when we're just looking at the whole organization, but certainly not at the granular level. I did review things like our wastewater capital fund, where we have assigned projects as either must-do or should-do, or you recall some of that rubric. And, you know, again, when systems are failing, you know, you might be able to defer a cost for a year, but you may not. You know, we learned last year when our generator just failed on us, and you just have to have a backup generator. We rented one, and the cost was virtually equal to the replacement at the end of the day. We would have been better off replacing that generator 50% through its useful life. It was still within its useful life, but it died nevertheless, and you can't always anticipate those things. So, I've applied a 25% reduction to capital and to operations. These other departments were a little more significant, and again, stormwater quality only at 30%, but you get a revised number. From a qualitative perspective, you know, what's happening with those reductions is captured on this slide. Basically wastewater, we're deferring some maintenance, we're eliminating at least a position, and reducing some of our training and licensing and those kinds of costs. City clerk would most likely be reduced from 2.88 to 1.
Justin?
Yes.
I'm sorry. When you're talking about deferring?
Yeah.
That's assuming we might get, go back to home rule in the future. What if that doesn't happen, and you keep on deferring, things break? Where's the money to pay for that?
That's right. So, and that's why the percentage, there was a percentage applied, assuming that certain things could be deferred, but most of those things would need to be replaced eventually. And what the mechanism to do that is not really addressed here. That could be increasing the expenditure limit beyond the state-imposed limit. It could be something like financing, which would make some of those costs excludable. There could be a number of things.
That could only be done every two years, if, that's my understanding. And if we need, say, one of the major pumps burns out, and we're two years away, how do we pay for that?
That's right. So, that's why, that's why 75% of that cost is maintained, so that we can be selective in where we defer things. But you're right. Overall, the other thing you have to be careful about is, for the same reason that our 49.5 projected spending is more than we actually spend, well, you have the same problems regardless of what your budget is. And that problem is, you have to account for the what-if. You have to account for, what if we're fully staffed and we don't have as many vacancies? What if a generator or a piece of equipment breaks, and we didn't anticipate it, but we have to spend the money? So, you're right, that has to be accounted for somewhere. This is, again, a pretty high-level perspective, saying, we think we could defer some of those costs, not permanently, but temporarily, but the rest of that, we have to maintain exactly for that reason, because some things just have to be fixed when they break.
Thank you.
City clerk, I'll stop going through all of the detail, but I want to give you a sense of the method of reviewing these programs. So, for instance, city clerk is one of those areas where you do have a pretty significant increase to your professional services every couple of years for the election. So, you don't have that every year, but in a year like FY '20, where you will have it, that's a cost you have to maintain. So, that's why you have a more significant cut in personnel than you have as a cut to financial resources, expenditures. Municipal court assumes you could just pretty much reduce to a couple people. Again, if some of our other programs, like code enforcement, or patrol, or whatever, are significantly reduced, you might have a much lower volume of activity. But again, I haven't discussed with departments, okay, what, if you had two FTE, what does that mean? A part-time magistrate, a full-time, you know, support person, and a part-time support person? And how would you do it? I haven't gotten that far. Simply looking in broad terms on what seems, perhaps I should say, as aggressive, as reasonable, as what I see as reasonable from this high level, would be reducing that program in half or a little more.
Justin, with regard to municipal court, do we have, like the city's required, do we have to have a municipal court? Can we say we're gonna shut down our court and send everybody to Cottonwood?
My read of the guidance from the administrative office of the courts is that we are required to maintain a municipal court. Now, that's silent on, you know, how large it has to be, and I think there are certain circumstances where you can discuss with some other jurisdiction handling some cases. You know, we just recently did something like that, but it was for the opposite. It was for certain cases that were maybe previously being heard in another court to be heard more locally. So, there's some flexibility there. I don't know the exact details, but yes, we're required to have a court that maybe could be provided by a contract, but that wouldn't necessarily be at a reduced cost. And then, again, stormwater quality, you know, we just had an audit, and we didn't get any real big things, but we were dinged in a few areas. We were complimented that for a community our size, we're doing a very good job, but when you look at the really strict letter of what it is that the regulators would like us to do, we're not doing all of that. You know, some of that is through contracts, some of that is through our personnel. So, I'm taking a stab to say that we could reduce a good chunk of costs by reducing the personnel allocated and preserving some of those contract services, but ultimately, we would have to reduce some of our street sweeping, pre-monsoon activities, storm system monitoring, et cetera. And I predict that if our efforts today, which are pretty comprehensive, you know, result in a handful of, you know, dings, so to speak, with our permit, that reductions run the risk of more non-compliance.
What about, I remember years ago, before we stepped up the cleaning of the stormwater system, there were a lot more flooding. Would you, would that be something that you would possibly be a cause of, if we cut it back drastically, we would end up with more local flooding?
So, this is our stormwater quality permit, which is a little different than the build-out of stormwater facilities.
Oh, no, the cleaning, what about the cleaning?
But, yes, I mean, potentially, yes. You know, I think that program is pretty effective, the way they go out, take pictures, work with private property owners to clean ditches and culverts and those kinds of things. You know, it's difficult to speculate on the exact result, but those are the services we provide that would be reduced.
Thank you.
And what would be the result if the audit got worse?
Well, at some point, the regulators get a little more heavy-handed, as they did with the city when it came to building wastewater facility. At some point, it could get bad enough that they simply require you to do something. I don't know where that line is with stormwater. But again, I think we do a pretty good job, but we're not in perfect compliance with our efforts today, so I'm just anticipating from that high level that reducing our commitment to those endeavors would have an impact. Okay. Next service area, and again, I apologize for the deluge of numbers and things, but this is something you can also retain and study further. Next area of programs, I'm calling critical health and safety. You know, I'm sure some could argue what's necessary and what's truly not, so I'll try to explain my rationale for purposes of this analysis. Again, I broke out some programs like dispatch versus patrol, because most often, we're running our dispatch with a single person. You can't run a dispatch with, say, a half of a person or three-quarters of a person. The majority of the cost in that program is personnel, and it's projected based on our current wages. We frankly had a hard time filling vacancies and retaining people even with those wages. So, we applied the standard 5% cut to kind of take out any conservatism that might be there, but aren't proposing any other cuts to that program, because I don't see how you could do that. Patrol, on the other hand, and support services, which kind of, I don't want to say we just threw out a number, but as I looked at that program and looked at the total number of officers, you know, recognizing that most often, we run a shift of three, it basically projects running shifts of two most of the time instead. There are other costs that could be reduced, but, you know, training and all those things, you know, do have an impact cumulatively on the level of preparedness. So, there'd be a discussion, you know, later on, if this eventuality came about, to determine really where those cuts would take place. Support services, same thing. Admin is reduced, because really, there's not many costs attributed to admin at this point. So, basically, you could try to reduce some salaries, or maybe reduce one position to part-time or something like that. Investigations, 25%. So, kind of in bulk, you're somewhere around a quarter, perhaps, of your total police department. Street maintenance, and again, another asterisk, just to identify that these are the remaining costs outside of the HERF money. As we discussed, HERF is excluded, so we don't want that to impact the analysis, but there is an additional 1.42 million. Again, you might be able to defer some of that, but this assumes that you maintain some of the big projects to rehabilitate streets and eliminate some of the more ancillary, you know, landscaping and things like that.
But that is something that could be eliminated.
This program?
Sure.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Unlike police or dispatch.
Well, I think it's probably more appropriate to say you could defer it. I mean, at some point, that infrastructure has to be maintained. You don't always, you don't have to pull the weeds, but you probably have to maintain the surface at safe-driving conditions at some point. I suppose you could-
At some point, yeah.
-let them deteriorate, but, right. This assumes we try to maintain, and, by the way, avoid escalating costs, because if a road deteriorates to the point of needing to be rebuilt, which we saw when we did Uptown, for instance, where the surface below the asphalt is insufficient, because it's taken on too much water and other things, those costs balloon significantly compared to just rehabbing the surface. These areas of community development, building inspection, PMZ, and planning, these are really the responsive things that we do. So, we're not generating this workload, but when somebody comes in to get a permit, and we, you know, inspect for conformance with the building code, or ensure that the property drains properly and those kinds of things, basically hearing an application. If somebody comes in and says, I want to build something, I have the entitlement or whatever, but it requires development review, requires a zone change, that's really what these programs are about.
Aren't we required to have a planning and zoning? Isn't it statutory in some way?
I'm not sure that it is absolutely statutory.
Okay.
But-
Here comes Robert to answer your question.
It was. I would love to have that answer, thank you.
No, the answer is no.
Okay. Thank you.
And my but was to say that we would have to decide, you know, in some way, shape, or form, how do you facilitate those requests of the city for permission to build something? And anyway, the rationale behind preserving a good part of those costs was that, that ultimately, if somebody comes in, you could delay, you know, some of the development process if you wanted to. You could even delay building inspections. You know, right now, we try to get to those inspections within a day, but given our volume of activity, we're already rolling over a decent portion of our inspections to a second or sometimes third day. So, you could reduce that a little further and just say, hey, we're gonna get to you next week, but the implications of that for anybody, whether you're building a deck or a home or whatever, would be-
But that would be a possibility, too.
It's a possibility, yeah. Engineering services out of public works, this is also kind of part of that more responsive exercise. I mentioned drainage and some of the civil things that we do when we're looking at traffic impacts associated with development proposals, et cetera. So, again, kind of, I don't know what that average is out to be, but, you know, you're cutting between 5 and 30% of some of those more responsive services, the ones that are provided directly to the people or in areas that are generally considered kind of, you know, concrete to what local governments do, roads, cops, those kind of things. So, the, how would we accomplish that? You know, probably about 10 to 15 positions total in PD. Some of the special assignments would probably be the first to go, things like animal control and the CSA program that aren't quite as critical as, say, patrol, you know, one of two investigators, some reductions in command staff. two investigators, some reductions in command staff. It's not on there, but also, you know, some selective training-related costs, et cetera. Street maintenance, you're essentially eliminating all the non-essential right-of-way landscaping, median-type maintenance, things other than really, you know, road service type things. And then engineering is a pretty significant reduction where you're just eliminating, you know, all kind of discretionary review, you know, maintaining the things that I think we have to do, like a traffic impact study or, you know, some of the drainage and the things that they do as part of the development review process. Okay, next, critical support services. We, I'm trying to be a little more aggressive in some of these areas primarily because, you know, you have to be to get to, to get within the state imposed limit. So this is just the city manager admin, not the rest of the city manager department, proposed cutting 50%. Finance, same thing. HR, which is a small department of two, so basically you're cutting that in half and, you know, or roughly half. IT, same thing. City Attorney's Office, same thing, 50%. The comm dev admins, so now we're getting out of some of those areas that are just, you know, not as directly responsible for citizen requests, but a small group, type 25. Facilities, maintenance, that's really our upkeep of all of our facilities. So this is another area where we assume deferred maintenance where you can. But again, our experience in recent years, hey, if the carpet's old and needs to be replaced, you can defer it. If the AC breaks and doesn't work, you probably need to fix it unless you can vacate the building. So that's, you know, a pretty rough estimate of trying to eliminate all the things that you just don't have to do, but preserving the things that I feel that you do. And then engineering capital, a very big reduction because, as you'll see, as we get down to the bottom, there's really very little, if any, capital projects left in this conceptual budget, to the extent that council was inclined to reintroduce more, you know, transportation projects or other flood projects that required other, you know, monies beyond the flood control monies, you'd need to adjust this number, but otherwise, it's basically eliminating the engineers that oversee capital projects. Okay?
So that's why you can do like standard street contracts and not major projects?
That's right.
As we discussed earlier, thank you.
That's right. There's a little bit maintained in there, basically to do the essential kind of HERF or stormwater IGA. Both of those are excluded sources, so I'm assuming you would continue those and want at least a part of a position dedicated to those projects, but not the additional personnel that are needed to manage the other ones.
To manage actual complex engineering projects, thank you.
So in the city manager's office that contemplates reducing one of the two kind of top administrator positions and reducing some of the support staff, that really is an admin position that serves kind of the entire office, but as you'll see in a bit, since some of the other positions are eliminated, you could probably do that and still provide some of the support. I mentioned later on in the budget, but, you know, one other implication of this and across the board is just, you know, reducing the volume of city council priorities. Obviously, we can't take on as many of the things we have historically with these kind of reductions. Finance essentially looks to cut almost in half or close, and again, you know, I just want to keep emphasizing, that doesn't mean I've talked to the department and they said, "Oh yeah, I know how we would do that." Just trying to be kind of aggressive in some of the areas that I think, you know, we certainly need some level of support service, but we were more, I was more assertive with projecting a cut on something like the city manager's office or finance than a function like patrol or, you know, development review. HR is reduced from two to one. We eliminate things like volunteer appreciation, recruitment and relocation costs, things like that. And IT staff, you know, that while the budget is proposed to be cut 50%, staff is a little less, the rest of that comes in either deferred hardware replacements or some reductions to licenses. If you didn't have as many employees, you know, you might be able to reduce some costs there.
Justin, with the police that you had mentioned, does that include the resource officer, I would assume?
Potentially, it does include patrol officers, so it would just depend on the prioritization. And I will say, in instances where we've been down four or five officers in trying to cover shifts, we've reallocated that school resource officer to a standard patrol. So in a case where we're losing 10 to 15 positions overall, that may be necessary. Again, I didn't quite get to that level of granularity, but if historic trends hold true, that's likely, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, let's see what happened here. Did we go back two slides?
Attorney, no, you're...
Or do we need to advance them next?
No, we, attorneys were...
Oh, sorry, yep, one more. You're right. Just didn't get to the end of the list. So attorneys reduced, our attorney's office, and that likely means certainly less in the area of risk management, which is kind of something that I think the attorney's office does as time is provided. This, you know, I don't know about the two positions, you know, it might not just be two positions. What it might mean is you have one that's dedicated and some other services that are provided by contract, maybe some of the prosecutorial things are done by part-time. You know, it's not to say it would be two people, but that the overall, you know, to accomplish a reduction of 50%, you've got to cut the payroll by 50%.
Maybe crimes will go way down too.
And again, facilities, maintenance, you know, the personnel dedicated to that effort is reduced, but the majority of the cost reduction comes from deferring maintenance and just eliminating everything that would be non-essential, things we could live without for at least some period of time. Engineering, capital, I mentioned, a big cut. You're essentially preserving a part of a position, maybe half of someone's job, to do some of the street projects, some of the stormwater projects, but that's it.
Justin, aren't you saving money, or haven't you been saving money by doing a lot of the road work in-house, a lot of the projects where we used to farm out and spend a lot more money? You would find a way to cut expenditures by doing it in-house?
Yes, and in fact, our team actually bids competitively, sealed bids, along with private contractors. And in some cases, we win them, in some cases, we don't. But in those that we've won, it has saved significant funds. But again, in a situation where you don't have those kind of projects, then you don't need the engineers to do that work.
Right, thank you.
Okay, and then we start to look at other operational needs. A little bit of a gut check for me, general services is mostly contracts, but I almost miss the fact that our liability insurance is also there, so I'm assuming you might have a small reduction there if we're doing a little less, but it's also kind of, your insurance is kind of your insurance. And in fact, in some cases, if you're not quite on it as much as you used to be, your risk of claims might be considered greater and your liability insurance could increase. But again, you know, just pointing out that that's one of those things that probably nobody on the side would think to look for and say, "Well, how much do you spend on that?" But there is. Traffic control aid program?
Pardon me, Justin?
Yes, sir.
On the general services, I know it's called critical, but I'm sort of, but does the general services have those service contracts?
And this excludes all of them. So what that means is there was one thing really deemed critical in the general services fund, and that's the liability insurance.
So that means no library, no humane society, no...
Yeah, and I will get to that kind of toward the end as far as what didn't make the cut at all. These are just the reduced programs. Traffic control aides, I actually think they're called traffic control assistants. I always miss the title of the A.
These are the yellow shirts?
Yeah, yeah, this is our traffic control, yep. So again, what I did at this point, having kind of a little bit of money to spend, but not a lot, is to kind of say, what does it seem, just from my purview, are the kinds of services that people most value? That was really it. So other operational needs, that's just another way of saying, out of what's left, what seems most essential? And that program is one that we've had quite a bit of pressure to maintain or expand, so I thought that it should be in, at least to some extent opposed to out altogether, but this contemplates cutting it in half.
So using this number here, on a given, right now, how many of these traffic enforcement, or traffic aides do we have? And what would the number be if you were to cut it?
You know, it's difficult to say because the way those people work is they're not even necessarily 20 hours. If we find somebody who's saying, "I'm willing to work a shift a week for a part of the season," we'll take them on. But, you know, we're out there most weekends and holidays and things like that. If we were cutting that in half, we might be avoiding Sundays or we might have a reduced operation in a shoulder season and try to preserve what's left of the program, the half, for those times when we're busiest.
And a given day, what's the normal amount that you would have work? You know, like on the holiday weekend, I know you have two with Lockapaki and sometimes, yeah, Uptown, four?
Yeah, something like that, yes. For most of the afternoon, not as much in the morning.
Right, so if you were to cut 50%, could you even do the job?
Well, you, in that case, what you'd probably do is, on the really busy weekends, you'd still have the full deployment, but on some of the shoulder weekends where right now we have a full deployment, you would have none, opposed to having half and half in both cases. But that would be a judgment call just based on how busy we are.
Of course.
And where we think the program has the highest value.
Thank you.
Code enforcement, you know, thought hard about, well, you don't have to have one. You know, we do get quite a lot of demand. You know, if you look deeper in the budget, I don't have it right in front of me, but can look it up, we get quite a few calls for this service. So this contemplates basically you have one instead of two. What does that mean? It likely means reporting to cases we can and prioritizing. So if we have certain cases that aren't as high a priority or can be deferred, so something like a neighbor thinks that the house being painted next door doesn't meet, you know, the right specifications for reflectivity, et cetera, well, we could probably do that in a week or two, but something like, you know, the loud music or something else that's more problematic and immediate, we'd prioritize those, and you'd have to reduce the number of calls and the time invested in some of those calls.
And the city council would determine not to, that that was not critical?
Yes, absolutely.
In any of these cases?
Any of these.
All of this could be changed.
That's right, that's right. In fact, I'm virtually certain that it would look different than this. This is an attempt to move beyond that 50,000-foot view where we only say, "Here's a projected budget and the cuts," and say, program by program, knowing that you can't just cut 50% or 30 or 70 or whatever the number across the board. What does it look like when you bring a little bit of analysis to bear on our organization? Okay, so park maintenance here, you're basically maintaining, you know, you're cutting some of the grass and things, but not doing nearly as much of the other landscaping. And, you know, right now, we take gum off the sidewalks in Uptown and things like that, you'd lose some of that, but you'd try to maintain some of the facilities even though we might not have programs, at least for people that either organize their own programs or whatever to maintain, you know, safety of some of those facilities, you'd have some of that park maintenance preserved. So again, general services, I'm assuming the liability insurance could be slightly reduced, you know, that's a big assumption, but traffic control aides or assistance staff reduced by half, code enforcement's reduced, and park maintenance is reduced as I described. So there's a summary here, but basically just want to acknowledge what has been then cut out. That was all the reductions to those categories that I described. These would be the things that I think fit into the kind of other services, not necessary, and just from a high level, didn't seem to be prioritized compared to the things that are reduced but left in the budget.
So you're going to be turning us into volunteers? Is that what I see up there in the first line?
I believe you're already volunteers for the most part, but this makes that official? Yeah, so all salaries, training, conferences, I mean, basically, there's nothing left in the city council budget. In the rest of the city manager's organization, there's a position dedicated to communication, citizen engagement, sustainability, there's chamber sport, and there's an arts and culture coordinator. Those are eliminated. And when I say eliminated, it means the program. So that's the personnel, that's anything that was for supplies and services, et cetera. Parks and rec in this case is also included in that. That would be, you know, pools, special event, rec activities, hubs, civilian, et cetera. Community, yes.
With regard to pool, we're just saying, school, it's yours, you have to maintain it from now on.
Sure.
That is what we're saying?
Yeah, yeah. I think what it really means in practicality, because the reason that the city operates it is that the school couldn't, it likely means the pool's closed.
Yeah.
I mean, I can't say that for sure, and maybe some citizens would agree to, you know, fund it or something like that. You know, it doesn't preclude anything like that, but the most likely scenario is there's not a public entity that can fund it.
But that would be controlled by the school, this group of volunteers, citizens, or whatever.
It is owned by the school, the pool's owned by the school, operated by the city through an IGA.
When you say people give money, you're talking to the school district and they do it wholly separate from the city?
That...
We're not allowed to take money in and then spend it, I assume, if it's not in the budget?
You know, again, there are some exclusions and grants and gifts, and some of those things do count as exclusions, but how that pertains to, say, personnel and things like that, you might get grants for a facility, but it would really depend. But I think if you look at our costs now, the idea of getting money from an excludable source so we could operate the pool and not have an impact the rest of our programs, I think would be very difficult, but I suppose anything's possible.
Will we close the dog park?
You know, some of those, again, there is some basic services in parks maintenance, so we'd have to evaluate those things. I think as likely as closing, what you would do is you'd say, "There aren't services provided, so people are, you know, on their own." If things like the sanitation of facilities and things would likely be out, but would we need to, you know, say, close it and put a chain up? I don't know about that, but we wouldn't likely have any services committed to the dog park.
More volunteers?
Yeah, sure. Okay, community development, obviously, there was some left in, but that's not nearly all of the department. Everything that is essentially a kind of proactive, you know, or something that I'll say that we initiate, the CFAs, you know, they're certainly suggested in the plan, but we do that, right? That's not necessarily an applicant coming in asking us. Historic preservation, I think, is similar. Things like the code revision, I mean, you know, I think those are useful tools, don't get me wrong, but you see the difference between that, updating the building code, and say, responding to somebody who says, "I'm entitled to build something on my property and I want a permit to do it." So we preserved the latter, you know, people asking for their permits, and cut the things that we were really initiating on our own. And then the economic development program, which is kind of standalone, is also eliminated. All the service contracts in this run of the budget are eliminated. That's library, recycles, community center, links, watershed council, forest service, where we do some trails things, and humane society. Small grants would likely also be eliminated. Now, those aren't all, most of those are smaller contributions. I listed the 2018 recipients because I don't want to speculate on what would be awarded, but the amount allocated has been similar. So anecdotally, to see what that looks like, you can see the list here, caregivers, food bank, you have emergency management, arts festival, wine fest, heritage museum, Plan B, film festival, scorpion boosters, art center, the canned event, Running River School, Guarding Street Humanity, chamber music, visual arts coalition, Trails Fund, symphonyetta, ballet, and Big Brothers, Big Sisters. Capital projects, other than those that we talked about earlier, a couple streets for some street rehab, excuse me, from HERF, preserved a little bit of the other street maintenance, but certainly not all, but the other kinds of capital projects aren't in the roundabout. City business software was replacing some, our kind of antiquated accounting systems. Parks and rec had in mind to update a concession stand, the Randinger Station parks, some playground resurfacing, the PD radio infrastructure, their station remodel, shooting range improvements, some Uptown enhancements, low-water crossing at Back of Beyond, a lift station access, that's not the lift station itself, but improving access to it, some storm drainage acquisitions, and the stormwater master plan update would be eliminated or at least deferred. And then the SIM projects in the 20 budget, if you look at the capital fund, you'll see these, Uptown roadway. And again, if we could reduce some of the other programs that were preserved in this kind of high-level look at a budget, and if we could find 1.4 million, you could match that to the grant that was estimated as part of the exclusions and accomplish something like the Y roundabout improvements, to just put that in context. Forest Road Connection bike and pet improvements and the travel information signs. Okay, so that's, again, just really high level of the kinds of things, not a plan. Obviously, that's not the only way to do it either. When communities hit the Great Recession recently, some of them did furloughs, some of them reduced salaries, so some of them might reduce fringe benefits. You know, we could look at all those things, but as we look very, at a preliminary basis of the total values of those things, you know, that's more of a horse trading thing where you might say, "Okay, we want to preserve a pool or we want to preserve a capital project, so what would we have to do across the board or with these programs that are left to reintroduce a cost like that?" But I don't think that gets, I don't think that's an alternative that gets you out of cutting programs and eliminating others, but it does provide some flexibility or latitude in being more selective or reintroducing something that you think you can't live without.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So you said at the beginning that you were starting from zero and building up, so I assume that when you got to the end here, you hit your 24 million number or whatever it was, right?
25.2.
Well, again, because the exclusions were off to the side, the rest of the budget is building to 13.5. And the 10.8 really depends on what you spend and don't spend. You can't look at that as money that's just going to be... You can't look at that as money that's just going to be spent.
Right.
You know, so you spend some of that and maybe not others. So, and I apologize, I did have a slide that I think was lost, and I'll look for it in my other file that did have the summary of costs, and it's not quite 13.5. It's just over 13, and the rest is basically, you know, some measure of protection for the what-if.
Okay.
Jessica?
So there's no contingency at all in that budget?
There is. There's that little bit, and I apologize, the summary slide is something like that.
Between 3.2 and 13.2, so it's, okay, thank you.
It's something small. And again, some of that is because, you know, in places like risk management, where we allocate dollars for something like claims, well, some years you don't have them. But eventually, you just, you do. So if you're backing some of that out, and you're backing it out across the board, it does make sense that you wouldn't allocate right up to 13.5. For instance, we haven't accounted for unemployment claims. I assume they would be significant if there was a massive reduction in force. Now, I can't predict how many, because some people might find gainful employment immediately and others wouldn't. But that's not built in, nor are things like paying a significant claim, because some of those costs were assumed to be reduced. So we did preserve some, you know, small amount at the end for the what-ifs.
Can I ask just, this is a what-if question. If there is a big claim that we don't have money to pay legally, what happens? We just don't pay it? Like everybody else doesn't pay it, or what?
We don't, we can't avoid that obligation.
Well...
It's still going to exist. There are ways to address that. There's, there was a specific piece of legislation that La Paz County had passed a couple of years ago to meet that specific need, where they had a judgment that exceeded their authority, and they had to get a special piece of legislation passed to do that. So I mean, there are remedies to that, but it's a real challenge.
Thank you. Scott?
I have a couple now, and I'm sure more will come to me later. I didn't see, maybe I missed it, it could have been there, but the wild card that always keeps hitting us year after year is PSPRS, ARS, ASRS.
Underfunded.
Okay, because of the underfunding and whatever the reasons are, but we get, our rates still keep going up for the pensions.
Yeah.
What happens if something goes up a year after this and we didn't anticipate it? How do we, you know?
Ultimately, you have to adjust. How you adjust, I don't know. Again, it could mean seeking some other approval from the voters, either permanent base adjustment or one-time override, which we'll talk about both of those next. It could be that council looks at if there are any capital-type projects or replacement types of things, significant maintenance that could be financed opposed to bought with cash, that might, you know, free up a few dollars operationally to do some of those things. But ultimately, you'd have to adjust. If the limit didn't grow sufficient to cover some added costs, you adjust.
Okay. And through all these cuts, you mentioned that's possible, hypothetical, sales tax, which is what funds this city, continues to come in, but it can't be touched.
Well, so sales tax isn't impacted, no tax rate is impacted by the home rule question per se or any of the state limits or permanent base adjustment or anything like that.
Right.
But some of that is spent in this scenario. So it's not that it's not touched, it's just that the portion that is spent complies with either the state-imposed limit or any other limit that's applied.
I understand that, but the remaining that's
Yes.
just continues to build and build and doesn't serve our residents here any good at all. Is that a fair statement?
Well, it's not, it's not spent, and the rate is not affected as a result of the home rule question. Affecting the tax rate with or without home rule is still a separate act of council.
Right, I understand. Thank you. I'll reserve myself to come back later.
John?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things. First of all, I was wondering, I didn't catch it in the numbers, but maybe it was in there. Did you take into account the fact that of our 3.5% bed tax, we're required to spend 0.5% out of the three on tourism?
I did not. I mean, in this scenario, all, in the entirety of any support that is currently spent for tourism is eliminated. So to the extent that we kept that percent, you would have to build in some expenses that were qualified.
Yeah, I saw that you were eliminating all of that, and that's the reason for the question. So under state law, you have to spend, if we're collecting the bed tax, which we are, we're required to spend it on promotion of tourism.
So presumably, I don't know if that's within the exact year that the funds are collected, so presumably, that could be something where it was saved, it would be easy with the amount of total revenues that aren't spent in a limit like that, to say, well, some of those are the half a percent of bed tax and saved for a future date, anticipating a different limit. But you're right, we'd have to address that somewhere, and it's not in this scenario.
Okay. And I want to compliment you on all the work that you've done here. And this is like, starting with, this is like doing a zero-based budgeting exercise, so it's
Very crude, however.
It's a lot of work. One other question, though. All the reductions that you're showing in personnel, that's assuming we have to cut, let's say, 50% or whatever it is in a particular department, and so therefore, we're going to be laying off a number of people. Do we have any flexibility to approach people who are working here and actually like working here and say, look, we're all in a bind, we'd like to negotiate a reduction in compensation, hopefully temporarily, but we'll see. Do we have that flexibility under our contract structure?
Absolutely. I think, you know, there are very few employees that are governed by a strict contract. We do have kind of those that are more at-will or that have, you know, some due process. But in any of those cases, typically, a reduction in force is one of the areas where you can just do what you need to do. So because of that, I think we could go to virtually every employee, and frankly, even those that might have some protection in contract, which again, would be limited to, you know, one or two or something like that, and say, yes, could we do a furlough, could we reduce fringe benefits, could we reduce salary to preserve more of the positions overall in the organization?
Okay, that's all I have on this subject. We're going to get later on into permanent base adjustment and one-time override, so I'll come back then. Thank you.
JT?
Thank you, Mayor. So, Justin, if this occurred, and then we found ourselves with a major expense, like a big lawsuit or something like that, I assume that with our current budget, we have flexibility to cut things back to pay for those kinds of things. But if we didn't have that, if we're much less flexibility, do we have, what the options would be? And specifically, do we have the option of taking on debt in order to pay something like that?
In some cases, I think, yes. But now, bear in mind that most of the capital projects and things that would lend themselves to debt financing are eliminated. So what you'd probably be looking at is if you had a major piece of equipment that failed, like at wastewater, is there an opportunity to do a lease purchase in order to preserve, you know, other dollars for operating? Because that type of financing would also be excludable, as I understand it. So you would have some of that flexibility. But again, this budget assumes most of that stuff is deferred anyway.
Yeah.
Or eliminated, yeah.
And then, I guess, I don't know if you have an answer for this, but I always wonder about what other cities do. And other cities, I mean, we know that's like 79% or something go through home rule. And if they go through a similar exercise like this, do you expect that they are looking at the same kind of 50% reduction? Or how, in what ways do you think our city is different from other? Is this a more draconian or a less draconian option?
You know, it's, okay, so I have not looked at every city individually. The data we've looked at says, I think, 87% of Arizona cities and towns do something other than the state-imposed limit.
Right.
Of those, the list that I looked at was about 62% do home rule, and the rest do a permanent base adjustment. The one-time overrides tend to be a bridge between a failed election and a future election, as far as I can tell. When I looked at communities like Oro Valley, Mesa, Chandler, Gilbert, and some of those, it was very similar. I think it was either Prescott or Prescott Valley, that it wasn't quite as draconian as it would be here, not as significant in terms of total percentage of budget. So, and that's only a small handful of, you know, the dozens and dozens that do this. But it all looked in the same ballpark. I mean, the figure I saw most frequently was around half.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Okay.
Okay, so that's the scenario where basically we say, we're going to abide by the state limit, and that's all for the presentation. So if we want to turn the lights on, we can talk about what the alternatives are for some other follow-up election question. And again, apologize that some of the information in the agenda bill is dated as of information that we reviewed today. I believe there are really two options to have an adjustment or something beyond the state-imposed limit that is not home rule. That's a permanent base adjustment or a one-time override. The permanent base adjustment does appear to be limited to kind of even-year elections, elections where a city council is being elected or state offices. So that would be 2018 or 2020. The one-time override is different in that it can be done during a special election cycle and an off-year. Now, as far as I can tell in talking with the Arizona League of Cities and Towns, what has happened when people, when cities or towns attempted to pass home rule or a permanent base adjustment and failed is to rely on the one-time override as a bridge until the next election cycle. They're not aware of a situation where home rule and a permanent base adjustment were considered within the same year, although they also said it's not, they can't see anything that prohibits it. I had put some things in the agenda bill that were really just league staff members kind of opining on, you know, what might be the implications of having both and if it could be done. And especially in the area where Tom Belshi had mentioned, hey, you know, some league staff has maintained that while it seems very clear that the letter of the law says you cannot ask for an alternative expenditure limit, which means home rule for two years, that they worried that maybe someone would try to stretch that argument to apply also to the permanent base adjustment. That's inconsistent with the letter of the law. And then what we discovered today in looking at information that the auditor general puts out is it's inconsistent with what the auditor general has opined. In other words, it looks as though every indication is that you can have both questions and possibly even both approved. Now, again, that precedent, I don't think, has been challenged, and the auditor general's not responsible for interpreting the Constitution, but they are responsible for administering and approving things like our analysis for home rule or a permanent base adjustment. So I think that's pretty significant that they've said, yep, it looks like you can do both of those things. Now, the practical side of things is, I do think there's some potential confusion in having two election questions, or perhaps three, because if there was something like a citizens initiative for a permanent base adjustment, perhaps a different base than one initiated by the city or something like that, you could have a lot going on. And I can only speculate that that's perhaps, that's why communities have relied on the one-time adjustment. But there are clear advantages of the permanent base, other than the potential confusion during the election or the possible uncertainty of exactly what happens if they both pass. The clear advantage is, an override would have to be done twice until you can even ask for home rule or permanent base adjustment again. Okay? And ultimately, it also resets that base at some number forever. So in other words, you never again go back to state...
I'm sorry, Justin, can you repeat that again about?
Okay. So we've got, we've got home rule on the primary ballot this August, right? Your only opportunities to consider a permanent base adjustment are November 2018 or sometime in 2020, as far as I can tell. Okay, so that's it. In other words, if there was no permanent base adjustment question in 18 and home rule failed, you would be precluded from asking for that permanent base adjustment until 20, and the only option left at that point would be a one-time override. Now, the one-time override can be done in May. So the advantage is that you have some certainty with what happened in, at the August primary, the home rule election, whether it passed or failed, obviously. I think the one-time override is almost certainly only necessary if it fails, or desirable, or whatever if it fails. And you don't have the confusion of overlapping. The timeframe for a permanent base adjustment in 18, for the city to initiate that, is fairly condensed. The analysis is due to the auditor general, I believe, July 9. So we would not only have to pass a resolution quickly, likely by special meeting, but more importantly, we'd have to set that base, and we'd have to try to take on an exercise where we discuss, what should it be? Should it be a little less than our forecasted budget because we don't always spend that much? Should it be enough to cover unanticipated expenses, whether that's increases to pension costs or big projects where we potentially already save some of the cash for the projects? And we'd have to, we'd have to resolve some of that pretty quickly. And then, as I understand the timeline, pro-con statements for a permanent base adjustment would be due, I believe, August 8, which is before the vote for home rule. So the overlap, I think, is the practical thing that makes that, you know, awkward perhaps. But again, if you don't do it in that November, you can't do it again until 2020.
Though, I apologize. The pro-con would be on permanent base adjustment, so it's either state limit, state mandate versus permanent base adjustment. That's what the pro-con would be?
By August 8, and I think the analysis would still look at the state-imposed limit compared to the permanent base adjustment. What wouldn't be known is whether or not home rule ultimately passes on August 28.
Yeah, I know, but...
So that's the scenario that I think is potentially confusing to voters, is you're saying, well, you're comparing a permanent base adjustment to a state-imposed limit unless preceding that, home rule passes. If they both pass, again, auditor general seems to opine that home rule is maintained for the four years, and then, you know, you would basically reset to that permanent base adjustment number thereafter. But I'll say, in speaking with the, you know, city attorney and the league, we've gotten three interpretations so far on exactly what happens, because it's never been tested, or challenged, I should say.
So if I may, to answer the vice mayor's question, because you said, could you say that again? And I think what you were referring to was, Justin had just pointed out correctly, that you would not, you would not just have one one-time override, you would have to have two one-time overrides.
No, that wasn't the question.
That wasn't your question?
My question was that, what we're trying to say is, we need to submit pros and cons of permanent base adjustment. So what I was asking, are the cons there, excuse me, are the pros there for, in favor of permanent base adjustment? But the cons would be, go back to the state mandated number. That's what I was asking.
So I should clarify that we don't submit those pro-con statements. So somebody could presumably submit a con statement and say they prefer home rule. They could submit a con statement and say they prefer the permanent base adjustment. Or really, they can say anything they want in terms of what they see as the pros or cons of a ballot question. But the analysis that would be provided in the information packet, I believe, would be, what is the permanent base adjustment compared to the state-imposed limit? I'm not sure if it's also in reference to whatever forecasted spending. I think it depends on who submits the information to the auditor general and what it says.
JT?
Justin, I just want to be sure it's clear. I'm pretty sure I'm clear on this, but I'm not sure everybody else would be. When you talk about if home rule fails, the likely option would be a one-time override that would be in May. That's not a vote of this council to do that. That is another election.
That's right.
Okay. And an election costs how much money?
About 25, 50?
25.
With a publicity pamphlet? Well, depending on the number of arguments, it can run about $25,000 to $30,000.
Okay. So that would be a likely occurrence, and it would cost that much money. And then it would still be up to the voters to decide basically the same kind of thing that they're discussing, deciding with home rule. So if they were generally opposed to home rule, they might generally be opposed to a one-time override as well.
And again, I kind of mentioned that one of the things that makes a permanent base adjustment different from the one-time override is its proximity to the primary ballot. So the advantage you might have in a one-time override is you know what the vote was, and was it close, was it not close, you know, what happened during the campaign to make, you know, cause you to speculate about why it failed or whatever. The advantage of the permanent base adjustment, while it's done kind of before you even solidify the results of the election in the primary, is, you know, you're not waiting for May, and essentially you get, you get two attempts. If council's intent was to take every opportunity to do something other than the state-imposed limit, you would potentially have the permanent base adjustment and a one-time override in the event that, you know, everything failed up until...
Could I ask, just a basic...
Okay, I'm going to start calling on people again. This is, okay, Jessica.
Really basic question. Because I think that this conversation of what happens when is sort of important to know when... know when home rule, if it fails, when would that take effect?
So we are under home rule authority through FY19.
Okay.
So regardless, the budget you just approved is preserved. You're preparing for the next year's budget in the case of a state imposed limit, home rule, or permanent base adjustment.
So May would be way before the expiration of home rule.
Yes.
The expiration of home rule.
It would be, it would be less than 90 days.
Yes, thank you.
So what that would require, and this is kind of an important point, is when you were queuing up a potential election question for a one-time override, is by then you would probably have to have a Budget A and a Budget B. Not the exercise I went through, but a real concrete Budget A and Budget B, because it would, I mean, we start that process, even the intense work that this council does is in April.
Right.
Right? So unless you want to really cram, you know, at the very, very end, you know, we adopt the tentative of a budget in June, which could be just a number of weeks after this May election, so likely you would have two budget scenarios in that case. And the advantage of that is, you communicate not in a speculative fashion, but in a very concrete fashion, this is what happens depending on the result of the election.
Thank you.
So I thought it would be useful to just run through the timeline then, Justin, if you don't mind, and make sure everybody understands it, and make sure you agree with my timeline. So August 28 of this year is the home rule election, and that's for fiscal year '20. That's when it takes effect. So that's for Counselor Williamson's question. Now, if it fails, we can't revisit it until two years later, which would be in August of 2020. So in the meantime, in May of 2019, we can do the one-time override, the first of two one-time overrides. And I'm not going to even get into the question at this point of what the voters are like to do, are likely to do. I think Counselor Thompson makes a good point, but that's not my point. So we have a one-time override in May of 2019, but that's an off-year election. So this will be a kind of a special election for the, for the one-time override. It'd probably be the only issue on that particular ballot. Off-year elections with one issue on the ballot tend to have really low turnout, just, that's just the way things are. People aren't voting for mayor and council and all that other stuff, and national elections and all that. So just keep in mind, keep that in mind then, as far as the likelihood of getting it passed, who are the people who are most likely to turn out for that election? People who are for it or people who are against it? I'll leave that to your judgment. But just keep in mind, it's an off-year election. You'll at least agree with that part of it. Okay, that's the first override. And we were told that that might be 25,000 or 30,000. But you have to do two overrides. So the next year, in May of 2020, we have to do the second one-time override. That seems almost like a contradiction in terms, but it's called a one-time override because it's only good for one year. So we would do the second one, and that would be effective for fiscal year '21. And then, in August, assuming we can do this in August, I'll get back to that in a second, in August of 2020, we would then perhaps put home rule back on the ballot. I mean, that might be your game plan, to put home rule back on the ballot in August of 2020. Does that make sense?
If that was council's direction, yes, yes.
Sure, sure. So, and that would be effective for fiscal year '22. There is a little technical problem, which I discussed with the city attorney earlier, that there is a two-year rule. You cannot, you cannot present it to the voters for at least two years, if home rule fails. So the election where we're presenting it to the voters is August 28 of 2018. It turns out that the election in 2020 is August 25, okay? So it's three days less than two years. Now, whether that, whether they'd hold us to that, I have no idea. I raised it just so we're aware of that. I don't think that would be a huge problem, because in that case, I think we could just do it in November if they told us we can't do it in August. So it's not, that's not a big point. Now, for the, well, I have some other questions that are, that are going to be related to the base adjustments. But that, this is just the one-time override that I was going through, and I want to make sure you agree with the timeline, that that's how it works. Okay.
Anybody else? I have a question on the permanent base adjustment. Once it passes, can there be another election for another permanent base adjustment? And are they limited in any way or unlimited?
Not, not as far as I can tell. They're not limited. You know, it might be the same kind of contradiction in terms that you see with, you know, one-time not truly being one-time and permanent not truly being permanent. And I have not asked, just from a practical or policy standpoint, how many communities have gone back and asked for a second adjustment. But there does not appear to be any limit other than the election cycle limit.
So it's not really a permanent adjustment?
Well, again, whatever the title communicates, what you're really doing is adjusting that base from what the state set in 1980. Nothing prohibits a city from adjusting it every two years. But the practical side of that, of course, is, you know, it does say permanent, the same way that one-time says one-time. You have to deal with those kinds of things with an education campaign, and, you know, always are some risk of voters being confused, but that's part of the course.
I think it's permanent in the sense that if you don't do anything else, it stays in effect. That will be your base adjustment forever, unless you go back to the voters and do another base adjustment.
I guess you could say that about a lot of things. If you don't change it, yeah, it's permanent.
Well, no, the one-time override, by contrast, is not permanent. It's, you know, it's only good.
I'm only talking about the permanent base adjustment.
Understood.
I'm not talking about the one-time override.
Understood. The terminology is it's a one-time override because it's good for only one year, and if you want it, the next year, you have to do it again.
Different subject.
One at a time, yes.
Different subject, yeah. Okay.
Any other questions at this point? If not, you know, I'm sure you have some cards, and we will ultimately be seeking direction from council.
I do have cards, but.
Wait there, are we taking questions on the base adjustment now?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Because I said I would come back to that. All right, so we've been told, we received, we, the city council, received an email today that there has been a citizens initiative that's been put forward, and they've gotten their, their permanent base adjustment numbers approved at the Auditor General level. I talked to Robert about it, he showed me a copy of it. And as I recall, it was an $11.7 million increase that they're looking at compared to what we would have with the state imposed limitation. And so if I take the 24.3 that is in the agenda bill, and I add 11.7, that comes out to 36. So is that your understanding of where the numbers are?
My understanding was the total spending limit was somewhere around twenties, mid-twenties, and that if you maintained exclusions at a similar rate as they're projected in the FY20 budget, that it would bring you somewhere.
Yeah, so ballpark, I mean, maybe, yeah. I'm not trying to get to exact numbers, but 36. So I do have a question about it, and that, this may be a question for you, Justin, or maybe for the, for the city attorney. Since that citizens initiative has already been approved by the Auditor General, in the same sense that our numbers have been approved by the Auditor General. And since we're running short on time, if we were to choose to adopt the citizens number, could we kind of piggyback on their approval, or would we have to go through a whole separate approval process, starting from square one?
Madam Mayor, Counselor Crivian, I don't know if I can answer that definitively, but I want to be careful about using the word approval with respect to the Auditor General's...
Yeah, I'm using the word loosely, I know that.
Yeah, because what they do is, they, they make a statement that they can't find anything wrong necessarily with the numbers. They don't, they don't approve or disapprove the numbers, but they, they make a determination that pursuant to the statutory requirements, they can't find any fault with it. So I think that falls far short of an approval of those numbers, per se.
Okay, but putting aside the semantics of it, because under the, under the calendar, there has to be a submission to the Auditor General, and then by July 30, you're supposed to receive review, detailed, and summary analysis from the Auditor General's office. So they, they have a certain amount of time that they need to look at it. Let's just say it's been reviewed and they didn't find anything wrong with it. The question is, do we have to go through that separate process? Or could we use their numbers and say to the Auditor General's office, you've already, you've already reviewed this favorably, and we'd like to just use those?
Again, I can't say this definitively. I think that we likely could suggest that to the Auditor General, that we, if that was the desire, that the numbers are acceptable to the city and the city wanted to use those same numbers. But it would still be up to the Auditor General whether or not they wanted a separate submission, I think, from the city.
Okay.
Jessica?
I just had a quick question regarding your first question. When you say they look, is it just, they look at a number and it's a number? And they, they say, yes, that's a number. What are they actually looking at?
That's, that's beyond my pay grade. I can't, I can't answer that one for you.
Okay, so, thank you.
Tom, you have a question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm a little hazy on how this whole process works, so maybe you can enlighten me. First, how many petition signatures are required to get that, whatever that petition was, approved?
400 and...
I think this is just numbers submitted to the Auditor General.
Yeah.
I don't know anything else about...
I mean, if, if whatever gets approved, what's the next step? Does, how does that affect the city?
That's another clarification that I think is significant. The way I interpret the statutory process, the petition process still has to occur. The, it's essentially a cart before the horse situation with getting the Auditor General letter prior to the petitions being taken out and the signatures being gathered. That still has to occur in order to get the, the measure on the ballot. But that second step of the process, the Auditor General, Auditor General letter of determination, has been acquired by the citizen group.
But what ballot would it be on then?
Pardon?
What ballot would it be on then?
In November. If, if the petition is taken out and the signatures are gathered.
In November. So in the event that the current home rule issue is on the August ballot, if it were approved, just say it were approved by the citizens, and then November ballot, then we'd still have this other event on it? And if that got approved, it would override the home rule, or not? Nobody knows?
Yes or no? They, they, the way that the Auditor General has issued, issued an opinion on this, and which is consistent with my original opinion when I analyzed this, ironically, and I tried to convince myself otherwise, is that they can coexist. These two can coexist. The permanent base would be in place if both are approved, but the home rule authority would, would override that for the, the four-year period that home rule is in effect. So as long as that home rule is, that's been approved, is in effect, that would override the permanent base at the end of that four years, assuming permanent, or the home rule is not reauthorized after that four years, then the permanent base would be in effect.
But in the, in the write-up, it tells me, yeah, the third interpretation is, so you're, you're going against that?
Yeah, well, the, again, and I take responsibility for the delay in getting the information, because this is a very confusing and complicated issue, and it's very unsettled, which is why we've been trying to do our due diligence and get the best information to you, which we didn't get, unfortunately, till the last minute with this Auditor General material that we, that we discovered. That, again, it confirmed my initial analysis and opinion on this, which is that they can coexist together.
If the, and if they coexist, and home rule, let's say the vote was 5,004 and 10 against, I mean, make it up, and the permanent base adjustment vote was 104 and 50 against, would the one with most votes take it?
Irrelevant, no, it's irrelevant. If they both pass, they both pass.
Okay, okay, so it doesn't matter.
And, and, you know, in consultation with the league, which is not an attorney opinion, and I don't know that they had, are aware of what the Auditor General's website says, but, but that was one of those interpretations that said, no, last in time prevails. So, so there might be some interest, especially in the case of a citizens initiative, of removing that home rule authority and saying, we think the ceiling ought to be X. And so that was their interpretation, is that if, if ultimately permanent base adjustment is approved after, even in the same election cycle, that that would preclude a city from spending more than whatever that limit is in that permanent base adjustment. Again, didn't have the benefit of asking them, had they reviewed the Auditor General's report. I tend to think the Auditor General's information is significant, although they're interpreting the Constitution rather than...
I did take some, I did take some comfort in the fact that that Auditor General interpretation was consistent with my original interpretation. At least there's some consistency there. But I also think that because it's so unsettled and uncertain, there is still the potential for some kind of, of a challenge to settle the issue if that were to occur. Whether that's likely or not, I don't know. There at least is potential for that to occur.
So if I heard you properly, if home rule were approved for 47 whatever, or 49 and a half, whatever the number is, and the permanent base was approved for 36, 36 would be the number. Is that your interpretation?
No, it would be the opposite.
Oh.
49 would be the number until such time that home rule expired.
Okay.
And then you would default to a revised base.
The permanent base adjustment would be moved in?
For, for the four-year period that...
And then it would have to be voted on again for both either, or?
No, because the permanent base adjustment adjusts that base forever. So at no time in the future of Sedona, unless something changes, would we go back to the state imposed limit. It would go back to this revised base. So then you would either have home rule as a subsequent election, one-time override as a subsequent election. Absent either of those, at any point in time, you would have this revised base, plus population change and inflation moving forward.
Jessica?
But, in that scenario, could the council not then put home rule on the ballot after those four years expired, notwithstanding the prior approval of the permanent base adjustment?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Scott?
So this is all really interesting to me, confusing to many. Permanent base adjustment is not very permanent. Home rule, and I can't understand how we would be better off with anything less to have a city that has services as opposed to a city that doesn't have services, or very, very diminished services. Maybe I'm just making a comment. But to me, it, I don't see what kind of city we're going to have for whether tourists come here because of the chamber, tourists come here because of vacation rentals, tourists come here for whatever reason, on their own, coming out of Scottsdale. They're not going to want to come to Sedona because there'll be so much gridlock and traffic, because we won't be able to do the, the road construction that we plan on to help mitigate the, the city and mitigate the traffic. I don't know what kind of life we would have here in Sedona.
And I would only say that importantly, you know, the analysis we provided today was a comparison of the state imposed limit. We have not done any other similar analysis on any other revised base. What the 49.5 represents is the likely continuation of our budget as it was approved this year. And the scenario we gave was what it looks like very, from a very high level, to comply with the state imposed limit. We have not looked at something else, like what if it was 20, what if it was 35, what if it was 45, or, or anything like that yet.
So if we did our own permanent base adjustment, we could set our own number at anything. We could set it $100 million.
You would only have the practical exercise of, you know, considering what is likely to be approved, as far as I know. I don't know that there's a, a limit to the permanent base, or if that's tied to projected costs, but, but even those projected costs are the product of our own internal analyses, so.
But if we, if we set it $100 million, we can get along for maybe 10 to 15, maybe 20 years on that, because we're at, what, $48 million now?
And we have not done any of those kind of long-range forecasts to know how long a certain number might be sufficient.
The Auditor General might not approve that.
Right, I'm sure he would.
Don't you have to show that you can make that budget? They may pay $100 million?
We haven't looked at that, and I don't know what, again, what you're doing in that exercise is also starting to say what might happen that we haven't anticipated. Now, I don't know that you ever get to $100 million in that exercise, but I don't know what the boundaries are there either, because we haven't looked at that and we've never submitted something like that.
Even if we did $55 million, yeah.
I don't know.
Other questions? Vice Mayor?
It's, mine is, I guess, a continuation of what Counselor Jabl and also what Counselor Crivian mentioned, because, because John said something like $36 million. So I'm wondering, with regard to permanent base adjustment, does council get the ability to establish what that number is? Or is it dictated by what maybe the petitions think that, that number should be?
I, I, yeah, I would encourage council not to consider a citizens initiative, other than how that might influence your decision to place it on the ballot. If the city council passes a resolution to place a permanent adjustment on the ballot now or anytime in the future, we would be doing the analysis and having the conversation with council about where to set that.
Basically, I was just saying, who makes that decision? Council make that decision?
For the ballot that council places, or for the election, the question that council places on the ballot, yes. But for a citizens initiative, no. So potentially, if, if...
But the citizens initiative is to try and put the permanent base adjustment on the November ballot.
But it's, but it's fairly specific in terms of what those numbers ought to be. So I don't, I don't... So, I don't, I don't...
I guess that's what I'm trying, if it's fairly specific what those numbers should be, then are we in the loop or not?
We're not, as it stands now. No, that what the Auditor General has accepted, we had no input on whatsoever. I mean, it might have been derived from some of our numbers, but to my knowledge, no city staff was consulted or gave any information that contributed to those numbers.
Questions, still, we're in questions. Scott?
You know, I'm not sure I understand. We know we have just below 10,000 people here, and we have a city with a budget of about $48 million. It's interesting that no one's taking into account the 3.5 million tourists, or even 2.5 million. I mean, it's not set in stone. I can't see how we could run a city where we have primarily tourists, where we have sales tax coming in, no property tax. I find it, I just can't see how we could even do that, and still maintain the quality of life that we're used to for all the residents here.
Jessica?
I just want to say that the issue of whether it's a good idea or not, the voters will determine, based partly on the information that we've presented tonight. It is up to voters to make this determination.
Is that a question? Can you make it into a question?
Isn't it up to voters to make this determination?
Yes.
So, I'm not sure that our opinions, or do you agree that our opinions about this are...
I think your decision tonight at this point is, if you don't like the idea of a state imposed limit, and you want to have a backup plan in the case that home rule fails, your choice seems to be clearly pursue a permanent base adjustment this November, which, you know, with all the practical considerations we talked about, and/or a one-time override the following May.
Thank you for clarifying it.
Okay. I think I'm going to just call a halt to questions here and go to the public. So, the first card I have is Mike Ward, followed by Dwight Kadar. I hope you all know the rules. It's three minutes. The light is on the stand. You start with your name and city of residence, please.
Madam Mayor and Counselors, my name is Mike Ward. I'm Sedona resident. I think, as the city manager has pointed out, anything other than having control over our future with budgets is economic chaos. And I think the foremost responsibility of the city council is to safeguard our community from having economic chaos. On August 28th, we don't know what the voters are going to do. They're going to vote yes or no. I do know that in 2008, home rule only passed by 57 to 43 percent, and I don't know what the specific issues were. I do know that this year, there's significant opposition to passing home rule, which means that home rule's not a slam dunk. There is a question out there. Furthermore, the, one of the organizations that's against home rule has put out a permanent base adjustment opportunity. We don't know if they're actually going to be able to get it on the ballot in November because there's still hoops to jump through. And this is a first in Arizona, as far as I know. These past two weeks, I've canvassed about 400 voters to introduce myself as a city council candidate. Most voters I've spoken to have been angry with the city's focus on tourism and its negative impact on their quality of life. Now, I'm not saying it is or it isn't. I'm just saying that's their view. Valid or not, there's concern that tourism revenues will be needed to be increased, meaning more tourism, to pay for any planned projects that we have, the extra $10 million this coming year that you've already approved, plus the following year. So, they're in a little bit of a limbo. I have no idea what they're going to do. I've been an ardent supporter of home rule in the past, but given the current voter climate, I'm not sure I'd vote to farm on it continuing. The council, on April 10th, had the opportunity to place a permanent base adjustment on the ballot in November, in the event home rule failed, and for whatever reason, the council decided not to take any action. So, here we are. We're talking about it again on the last day that council can do anything. Should home rule fail in August, there's no city Plan B. There might be a citizen's Plan B, but we don't know. We do know that we have other options, a one-time override, which is going to cost us more money, but how that works, we don't know. I'm fairly sure that with the uncertainty, if home rule fails, if I were on the city staff, I'd be sharpening up my resume, and I'd be gone. I'm not going to take that risk. Uncertainty for a person is pretty scary. Be prudent. Have a Plan B.
Thank you. Dwight Kadar will be followed by Michael Schroeder.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Counsel. My name is Dwight Kadar. I live in the village of Oak Creek. The citizen's proposal for a permanent base adjustment for the city of Sedona was filed with the Arizona State Auditor General's office on June the 5th. The Auditor General has confirmed that a letter was dated yesterday, was delivered to the mayor, stating that the citizen's proposal for a permanent base adjustment for the city of Sedona is in conformity with the Arizona State Constitution, ARS Title The city of Sedona's citizen's proposal seeks voter approval to permanently adjust the expenditure base of the city of Sedona as determined by the Economic, excuse me, Economic Estimates Commission. If approved by the voters, the city of Sedona's 1979, 1980 base expenditure limitation will increase by roughly $2.58 million, adjusted each future year for population and inflation growth since 1979, 1980. With voter approval in 2019, 20, the city's expenditure limitation will increase by $11.72 million, from $13.45 million to $25.17 million. This increase, including the excludable items, will take the total limitation to roughly $36 million. It strongly suggests that the city council vote in favor of placing the citizen proposal for the permanent base adjustment for the city of Sedona on the November 6th ballot, immediately taking all necessary steps to ensure this takes place, as numerous citizen groups, including one mayoral candidate, Tony Tonich, are actively campaigning to defeat the August 28th home rule ballot. The Auditor General's office has confirmed directly to me that the city of Sedona may submit the citizen's permanent base adjustment proposal with no changes for an expedited review. Should the city decide to put in their own number, the Auditor General's office has said, your submission will start from ground zero. Thank you.
Mike Schroeder will be followed by Jim McCabe.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Counsel. My name is Mike Schroeder, and I'm a resident here in Sedona. Today, I received a copy of a letter from the Auditor General, her office, stating that the citizen's proposal for a permanent base adjustment submitted on June 5th is in conformity with ARS 41-563.03. A citizen's proposal for a permanent base adjustment on the November 6, 2018 ballot, if approved by the voters, would increase the state limitation expenditure from $24.3 to $36 million. In my opinion, the Sedona City Council has breached its fiduciary obligations to its citizens by not providing a choice to home rule. Should the home rule fail, which if you monitor social media, as I do regularly, and other people and sources around town, that is a real possibility, the city of Sedona will be left with a slightly more than $24 million opportunity to operate its fiscal 2019 and 2020 budget. Your city manager, Justin Clifton, has been making presentations to groups around town, preaching, in my view, Armageddon, including possible reductions in our police department. This kind of scare tactic is not only inappropriate, but borders on being illegal under ARS Title 9, 500 dot 1,4, covering the use of city employees to influence elections, as he appears to be advocating for home rule. In summary, the state limitation expenditure of $23.4 million may prove inadequate, and the alternative limitation expenditure, or home rule, is effectively unlimited spending of revenues and reserves, which is all the city of Sedona council has chosen to place on the August 28th, 2018 ballot. The third option, permanent base adjustment, resulting in spending levels similar to which is currently being experienced by the city of Sedona, when introduced by Councilman Curran for discussion and exploration by the city council and city staff, was unanimously rejected by the other council members who formerly endorsed home rule, which, in my opinion, is a clear-cut violation of their fiduciary obligations to the citizens of Sedona. Should you wish to review the AG-approved, the document that's already been approved, we would be more than happy to work with the council to get the approval that's already been issued by the AG on the ballot, which will fast-track the program. Thank you.
Jim McCabe will be followed by Ernie Straugh. And that's the last card I have, so if anyone else wants to speak, you need to fill out a card now.
Good evening. My name is Jim McCabe. I live on Linda Vista in Sedona. The first time I heard adjusted base payment, base adjustment, permanent base adjustment was back in April at a meeting here. It was brought up by John Caravan, and it was dropped like a hot potato. It was like, we don't want that. And the way I saw it, it was another option, and an option that should have been given to us. Up until tonight, I haven't heard that term at all. Permanent base adjustment, what is that? No one knows what it is. I think most of you just let that drop like a hot potato. Now, we're starting to hear about it because now we probably need it. I'm all in favor of that at the November election, especially because I think it works. I think it works well, and I think we're going to need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ernie?
Mayor Moriarty, Vice Mayor Martinez, and Counselors. I'm Ernie Straugh, and I live in Sedona. I rise today to speak in favor of the city of Sedona adoption of the permanent base adjustment to the Arizona Legislature's limitations to cities and towns expenditures. Henceforth, I shall refer to the permanent base adjustment as PBA. I do wish the council had given greater consideration to this approach some time ago. However, that is past history. My recommendation, however, is that the council not further confuse the public by attempting to place the permanent base adjustment on the November ballot. That might result in no votes for home rule, with the possible option to vote for the PBA in November. PBA is a more complex concept to understand and needs time to be digested by our voter residents. I strongly recommend a vote on PBA during the 2020 election cycle, giving plenty of time to, for the public to understand the concept. Now, that would actually mean that we continue with our current budget until the time that the 2020 election would occur and this would initiate. Within the last two days, I've spoken with the deputy city manager in Cottonwood and the administrative services director in Clarkdale. Both cities have adopted PBA. Both are growing faster than Sedona, and both will not come close to exceeding their PBA limitation in the next 10 years. Both are glad that they saved their community money by eliminating expensive elections every four years and risking the financial disaster of a no vote on home rule. I have also viewed the Arizona Auditor's webinar on PBA, and I recommend that each one of you counselors do that. However, you're not going to have time because the vote is tonight. Thank you for considering my recommendation.
Thank you, Ernie. I saw somebody filling out a card. Would you please hand it into the clerk so we can call on you? But go ahead and start speaking. Give us your name and city of residence, please, for the record.
Hi, I'm Pete Conrad. I live in Sedona. My question is kind of a follow-up from Tom Lampkin's question. It's for Robert and Justin.
Please understand that you can't ask the staff questions. You have to convey your question to us.
Okay. So, Tom had asked if the home rule passed, and then the permanent base adjustment passed, considering that the permanent base adjustment would have passed second in the calendar, would the permanent base adjustment then become the rule of law? And I thought I heard that the first answer was yes, and then the second answer was no, that the home rule would override the permanent base adjustment, even though a home rule would have been approved in August and the permanent base adjustment approved in November.
Okay. Thank you, if that's all you have to say.
Yeah, no, I was just asking a question.
Okay. So, I believe that answer...
You can say it.
He said Sedona. Yeah. I believe the answer was, the home rule prevails.
It does.
If it passes. Is that correct?
They will both, they will both be in effect, but the home rule will override the permanent base, so long as the home rule is in effect for the four years.
Okay. Okay. Bring it back to council. Any further questions?
Quick question to follow up to that, Madam Mayor. Are you saying that at the end of that four-year home rule period, the base adjustment would kick in and take over permanently at that point in time?
Unless...
Unless something else changes and more petitions and more whatever occur.
Unless there's another home rule election or another permanent base...
Okay. We're back in the same position again. Thank you.
Okay. So, now, discussion? JT?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to just point out that the issue of the permanent base adjustment is not a new one to this council. In fact, I remember when I was elected four years ago, that was a home rule election that passed at that time. And one of the things that we discussed in terms of our priority, I think it was that very next winter, was can we avoid having to do this election every four years? Yeah, as the Vice Mayor brought that up, and mentioned that there was this other option that we could consider. And I remember saying at the time, boy, let's look into that. It actually was on our priority list at one point, relatively low, and then over the years, it came up or didn't come up, but we certainly did vet it very carefully, in my opinion, this last spring, when we've had all these discussions and we decided what to do. From my standpoint, I can definitely see the advantage of a permanent base adjustment, but to me, it just pales in terms of the advantage of home rule. The point that I made when we decided to put that on the ballot, I will just repeat right now, which is that I think it ensures for the community and for the council that represents the community, the maximum flexibility and self-determination. So, if you have a permanent base adjustment to a very high level, you could argue that's probably just as good, and you wouldn't have to do it every four years. But the problem with that is, what is that number? And if we, if we, if we trust our staff to be diligent in controlling our costs and providing us with budgets that are reasonable and conservative from year to year, and we trust ourselves to understand the issues of the community, then I think self-determination is the way to go. If I were a city counselor at a different city, somewhere else, where they have problems and they have potential graft and all kinds of other things going on, I might have a different view on that. But one of the things I've learned in working in this particular chair for four years is that the city is run far better than most people imagine, that there is much better controls over these things, and that's the point where I say, let's keep our options as complete and open as we possibly can. And there are many other ways to deal with the different philosophical... And there are many other ways to deal with the different philosophical points of view of whether we should be spending more or less than putting some artificial clamp on what we do. So, I'm going to be very much in support of the position that I took earlier, which is that we did the right thing by the city, by the city and the community to put the home rule on the ballot again. I'm very, if, I won't be here next year, but if I were, I would be very interested in having a fuller discussion on what permanent base adjustment might be. But for this election cycle, I think we're doing exactly the right thing, just as we are, and I don't recommend any changes. Thank you.
John?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I respect Councilor Thompson's views, but I think they're not especially relevant to what we're, what we're supposed to be deciding tonight. Tonight, what we're trying to decide is, should we have a Plan B? We already have Plan A. We've already put home rule on the ballot. That's not an issue. Now, the question is, what happens if home rule fails? Justin has done a lot of work to take us through a scenario of what happens if we have no home rule and no backup plan? What would we do with our budget? And he's shown us a very grim scenario. I think you'll all agree that that does not look like a favorable way to go. So, the question is, we know that if home rule fails, and if we don't have a backup plan, then the state limit is going to hold us to $24 million, and there are going to be drastic cuts. Justin explained all that. Now, let me just put all this in perspective, first of all, because this is going to be relevant to the permanent base adjustment. Why is the limit $24 million? Has anybody wondered that? How did we allow that to happen? Why is it 24 million? How did we get into this mess? And the answer is, we've been doing this for 22 years, and we've been doing home rule, and we've never adjusted our base. Okay? So, our base is the original base that comes from 1979, 1980. It's never been adjusted. We could have adjusted it at any time during that 22-year period if previous councils had understood the rules and had taken the opportunity to do that. Now, that wouldn't mean that they wouldn't have home rule, because the Auditor General's website makes it very clear that home rule and base adjustment can peacefully coexist, and as long as home rule is in effect, it trumps the base adjustment. Then, the base adjustment only becomes effective if home rule expires. In other words, if it fails. So, we know that. So, and that's actually explained in something that I handed out back at the, in the April 10th meeting that we had, something from the Auditor General's website. So, the result is that home rule takes precedence until it expires. The permanent base adjustment never expires. You can always adjust it again, of course, but it's permanent in the sense that it never expires. And so, if home rule fails at any time, we would have a much more favorable state limitation to fall back on, if we had done an adjustment at some point. So, at any, any time during that 22-year period, like, let's say, four years ago. We could have put both home rule and the base adjustment on the ballot in the same year or in two years apart. It doesn't really matter. Home rule still would have trumped it. We still would have ended up doing home rule every four years, but we'd have this higher base adjustment, and we wouldn't have this sword hanging over our head by a thread, so that we're worried to death now, what happens if home rule fails? Look what's going to happen. The sky's going to fall, and we're going to have $24 million. We would not be in that position if we had actually done something about it. Okay, now, that's kind of water under the bridge. So, we didn't do it, and now, here we are, facing a situation where if home rule fails and we never did a base adjustment, so we're with our original base, we need a backup plan. Okay? And that's the basic thrust of what I want to talk about. We need a backup plan. Now, there are two ways to do a backup plan, and let's talk about the first one, which is putting the permanent base adjustment on the November ballot. Now, if we do put it on the November ballot, and then home rule passes in August, well, then, at that point, once we see the results of the election, we'll have two choices. We can just go ahead with the permanent base adjustment anyway. It can't do any harm, because home rule will have passed. If the voters approve the permanent base adjustment, that's a good thing, because it'll raise our base. And the next time, when we're facing this home rule election, if it fails, we won't be facing such a huge cut in our, in our budget as we are now. So, we could just leave it on the ballot. That's one choice. The other choice is, we can look into pulling the plug on our, on our permanent base adjustment. And the way we would do that, I would think, is by simply not completing the required steps that have to happen after the August election. For example, you have to print pamphlets, you have to print ballots. It seems to me, although we'd have to check this, it seems to me, we could probably pull the plug on it by just saying, "Okay, we're not going to incur any printing costs. Home rule won, and we're not going to go ahead with the November, with the November permanent base adjustment." So, we have, in that sense, control over it. But we could, if we want, just leave it on the ballot as a, as a backup plan for future times. So, other than saving some money, there may not actually be any strong reason to pull the plug on it, and it would cushion the problem in future, with future home rules in future years, if we had a failure of a home rule election. So, it would be a good thing to just leave it on the ballot. The only thing is, we'd have to incur the printing costs. So, the, that's, so that's one way to do a backup plan, the permanent base adjustment. The other way to do a backup plan is to say, "Well, let's not do that. Let's do a one-time override." Now, despite what one of the speakers said, we can't just let, let things ride until, you know, 2020 to, I don't remember what the year was, but we can't just let things ride, because our, our home rule is going to expire. So, we would have to do a one-time override. And in fact, as was explained earlier, we have to do two one-time overrides. So, when somebody at the podium said, "It's going to cost you extra money," and I saw one of the councilors looking, show some surprise at that, I think that's the reason for it, that you'd have to do two one-time override. Each one is a separate election with its own separate costs. So, the second election would be in May of 2020, and that would be for fiscal year '21. And then, in August 20 of 2020, we'd be able to do another home rule election, if that's what council wanted to do. So, I mentioned the timing problem, you know, the three-day, the three-day issue. You should also think in terms of possible confusion for the voters in that scenario. Do you really want to put all your eggs in the one-time override basket and do that twice? Roll the dice twice? Because if either of those things fails, you're done. I mean, we're in 24 million land. That, that is not where we want to be. So, it seems to me that rather than roll the dice and say, "Let's just plan on being able to do two one-time overrides," kind of a two-bank shot, why don't we actually take advantage of the opportunity we have to do a permanent base adjustment in November? And if, for some reason, all of that failed, if, if home rule failed and the permanent base adjustment failed, then, then we can take advantage of the one-time override. But I don't, I don't see that as a primary plan. We shouldn't pass up the opportunity to put the permanent base adjustment as a Plan B on the November ballot. If it passes in August, as if home rule passes, then we can just leave the permanent base adjustment there and see how, how the vote comes out. It can't possibly do any harm at that point. If home rule doesn't pass, I think we'll be glad we have that backup plan in November. We really shouldn't rely entirely on being able to do the two one-time overrides. So, what I'm proposing is two things. Number one, let's direct the city manager to prepare numbers. I know the time is tight, but I'm sorry, this was suggested a while ago, and we, now we're in a tight position, but we can still get it done, I believe. So, let's direct the city manager to prepare the numbers, assuming that the city manager, well, I think we have, we have to look at two possibilities. One is, do we want to try to adopt the citizens' number of 36 million? If we do that, we just heard that the, that the Auditor General will give us an expedited review. If we don't make any changes in what the city, citizens' plan is, then we can get this thing through really quickly without having to do all of our own homework. On the other hand, if council decides that 36 million is too low and they want a higher number, then the city manager would have to prepare the analysis. The city manager would have to prepare the analysis for that higher number, and that's going to take some work, but I think it's something that should be done. The second thing we need to do is, we need to schedule a special meeting ASAP to consider the city's numbers and the citizen's numbers, and let the city council decide which we want to use. So, there are really two steps to this. Tonight, all we have to decide is, do we want to do a permanent base adjustment? Yes or no? If the answer is no on council, then that's the end of the discussion, and we don't need to get into any more, any more of this. If we decide, yes, we do want to do it, then we need to do what I just said, which is, have the city manager prepare the numbers and schedule a meeting ASAP, because according to the league calendar, the city is supposed to vote no later than the end of June. All right? So, that would have been, if this is our last regular meeting, that would have been tonight. Well, maybe we can't quite make that deadline. Maybe there's a little bit of slop in it, because those are recommended dates. But we would have to, we would have to schedule a special meeting of the council as soon as possible to, to make a decision on this. As soon as the city manager was able to get those numbers ready, we would want to look at them, decide if we want to go with a 36, or perhaps a higher number that the city manager would recommend, and decide which one, if either, to put on the, on the November ballot. Tonight's decision is just, do we want to do any of this?
Okay. I think we heard that. Can we maybe get some comments from others at this point?
Of course, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Well, it just seems to me you're repeating yourself, so I don't see any point in taking up more time. I'd like to have others have a chance to comment on what you've said. So, let's start with that. Tom?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Great comments by both councillors on my left and my right. Seems to be a cluster, doesn't it? What does all of it mean? I mean, we've had trouble in this room understanding it all. I'm thankful that we haven't spoken much about the one group that's in this, that's most important, and it's the citizens of Sedona. They all get to vote. And as far as Plan A, I think Counselor Thompson was right. We did not make that decision before in a vacuum. The people have voted six to one to go with home rule as an option, that the people should consider as one vote, and I don't think it was made in a vacuum. We talk about what's Option B. Well, the fine citizens of Sedona have given us Option B already, through their petition. So, it exists. So, the citizens, I'm leaving it up to them to make the decision. And I think that we talked about Option C, which is kind of set, shut to the side, is the one-time adjustment, this one-time exception that we could go to in May. If Plan A blows up and Plan B blows up, you can try Plan C, and if it blows up, then we've got a problem. But we've got a year to look at it. And I believe that the recommendation that we should not confuse the voters by throwing a PBA on the, on the docket from the city and, as well as potentially this one from the petition, is good advice. I think the city could consider it. Look at the PBA alternative somewhere down the road. There's time for it, and justice is at that time. But more thought needs to be given to it than trying to come to judgment here in 20 minutes. I think that that would really be a disservice to the city. Thank you.
JT?
Yeah, I want to just comment that I do think, Counselor Kirven says we need a Plan B, and I do think we do have a Plan B. I think the Plan B is the one-time override. And if you think about it, if home rule were to fail, we would have some information as a result of that. How much did it fail by? We would, we would have some time to spend figuring out what the, the right number would be for the, the one-time override to put before the voters. What we have, if we take the tact that Counselor Kirven is suggesting in having the permanent base adjustment put on the November ballot, is that we have to come up with that number now. And it's just kind of a swag to try and figure out what that number would be. So, I think we have a lot more information in leading up to a May vote, if such a vote would be necessary. And so, for that reason, I think that's, that's the Plan B that we should, we should consider and not the, putting the permanent base adjustment on. If the, if the citizens' group wants to go ahead and get petitions to put that on there, of course, that's their right to do that. They have the right to do the same thing, to recall any of us, or to do a number of other things. And that's part of what makes our, our democracy good. If we had it to do over again, I think maybe we might have put a higher priority on looking at the permanent base adjustment for two years ago. At which point, if we had done that and come up with a really good, solid number for that adjustment, and that was in effect, even though we were in home rule for another two years, now, we would be looking at election that's home rule. If it passes, it's our budget, and if it doesn't pass, it's like 50% below. It would be some different number, and it would be a different thing entirely. So, for that reason, I think it behooves us to really strongly consider the permanent base adjustment for 2020. And I would, I would call on our citizens, who are looking at doing this separate ballot initiative, to seriously consider whether that might be a better point of, of departure, is to consider aiming for 2020 to get that in place, so that we don't have to go through this home rule thing every four years. But I don't think, for all the reasons stated, that it's a good idea to try and put them both on. There is a serious concern about, about being confused and, excuse me, in voting one way because you think something else is going to happen when it isn't. And so, I would, I would strongly urge that we not go down that path.
Let's start at the other. Oh, go ahead, Scott.
It's interesting. It's a lot of good points. I appreciate Counselor Kirven's comments, although I'm not surprised by them at all, but I understand them. You know, with the permanent base adjustment, we'll still have drastic cuts. So, you know, when, to say, "Well, if we go to the permanent base adjustments, things will be nice, things will be good." Well, we'll still have cuts. How many cuts? How many staff people will we lose? How much of our services will we lose? We don't know. You know, I don't think any number that we would come up with for a permanent base adjustment, even if we looked at, you know, two years ago, I don't think there's any number that we would come up with that the citizens' base group would be satisfied with. So, but I do agree that we should look at it. I do agree, not happily, but I hear what people are saying. If we looked at it in two years, I don't think that it would do us any good to go and have it on the November ballot. By us putting it on, I mean, right now, it's either, "Well, if we don't do it, the citizens' base group is going to do it." Sort of sounds like blackmail to me, quite honestly. But I would agree to look at it for 2020, like Counselor Thompson said. I don't know what really would be gained, you know, unless the number was really low, and we'd have to cut services. But I think we should look at it, to be fair. You know, we don't have our figures now. For us to say, "Well, we're going to put it on the ballot in November," we don't have any, any figures for that. So, to look at it in 2020, I think we should look at it. I'm not committing, if I'm still here come August or November, well, actually, November for the appointment, if I'm still here, I would agree to look at it and consider it. But as of right now, Counselor Lampkin, he's always put the good spin on things. I appreciate that. Leave it to the voters. Let them decide, and then we move on in two years and plan, right? Maybe we have a committee to come together, a citizens' committee, maybe if that's what it takes. But quite honestly, I don't see how we can have any cuts that aren't going to hurt, any which way. But I have to listen to the citizens, and, you know, I, too, have been campaigning. I'm hearing people who don't even understand what permanent base adjustment means. They don't understand what home rule means. But that's what people want, so I have to listen to them. But certainly, right now, today, I'm fine with putting it, going with home rule, the way we already agreed. way we already agreed to and voted to, but I'd look at it in the future. Thank you.
Jessica?
I think our discussion this evening shows that this is a little bit of a confusing issue. We have gone on now for over two and a half hours ourselves, talking about it, and thinking about it, and questioning about it. My discussions in the community, when I walk around talking to people as part of my campaign, is that people are generally confused about home rule, and most of them haven't even heard of the permanent base adjustment. A lot of people are motivated pretty much entirely by a feeling of anger, and this happens to be one way that's expressed. I think that it's important to let people have a chance to be told and to have some time to try and digest what they're going to be asked to vote on. I think people have begun to talk about and get some kind of sense of home rule. I think that's been happening. I think putting another issue that seems like this issue but isn't this issue on the ballot is going to be very confusing. I am not in support of doing that. Certainly if the citizens' commission decides it wants to go away and cash in on the feelings of the community in terms of, I think they said it, anger and dissatisfaction, that's certainly their right to do it. That is what is so wonderful about the way all of this works. I think keeping it as simple as we can this year is what makes sense, in fairness, to people who are going to be asked to be making decisions. So I basically, not basically, I agree with a lot of the statements that were made before. I think Plan B is the one-time adjustment. I think Commissioner Kirven made some very good points, very interesting points, and I think he made an extremely good presentation of those points. And so I think that it's incumbent upon the council to take, begin to take a look at whether it makes sense to do a permanent base adjustment, and to give it the time that's needed to actually make that decision and to actually develop the numbers that are going to serve Sedona for the future. So that would be where I stand right now.
Vice Mayor? Was that clear, or do we have to? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess, just it was brought up by Counselor Williamson, and I think it prevails, everything that we've been discussing, is confusion. It's confusion. We have a group of citizens that really worked hard to get this initiative, I guess that's the word I'm going to use, correct me, Robert, if I misspoke, really worked hard to get this initiative approved by the Attorney General. But it's our --
The Auditor General.
The Auditor General. Okay, let's step in there. But it's up to us to decide if we want to follow through with that and put it on the November ballot. Is that what I'm hearing? Or it's going to be on there no matter what, because the Auditor General says?
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor Martinez, it depends. It depends on what actions that group decides to take in response to the letter that they've gotten from the Auditor General, that what the council is considering is a completely separate, I guess not necessarily, could be a completely separate course of action. So I think you have to separate the two. What the suggestion was is that the numbers that were submitted, the analysis that was submitted, could potentially be used by council, but doesn't have to be used by council. It could be a different set of numbers, different analysis that gets submitted.
But rising above the numbers is what the hard work that the group did, is this says we're going to need to put that Plan B, as we would say, on the November ballot? Or is it still up to say, no, we're going to go home rule, and then if that fails? I mean, something's going to happen in November, and I don't understand.
Mr. Vice Mayor, it's completely up to that group as to if they want to continue to pursue that initiative on their own, irrespective of anything council does. That's their right as citizens to take that course of action if they choose to do that, just as it's the council's prerogative to take a similar course of action and do it on your own.
So the citizens' group, if they, like I said, it's all cloudy up there.
Vice Mayor, excuse me, you understand that the citizens' group, in getting this ruling from the Auditor General, does not mean that it's going on the ballot?
That's my basic question.
They still have to get, they still have to take out petitions?
If they get the petitions, if they get all the numbers, then it could be on the November. It's the numbers that I'm wondering about, because we're, you know, Counselor Kirven, basically said, maybe we should be working on something that comes up with our number, and maybe the citizens' group would have their number. And I'm just wondering, what's the choice? What's the option there?
It could be neither, it could be both.
Right, and there's no clear path to say reconciling the difference or somehow negotiating those numbers. I think it's important to add that I would be reluctant to take anybody's numbers regardless of the source from the outside. It's meant to be no disrespect to anybody, but if council wanted to do that, it would certainly require us understanding where those numbers come from and what they are. But I think the most likely, the recommendation that I would give is always that we work those numbers internally and never just take them from anybody, just as a matter of, you know, proper course, but.
Well, I agree with what past Vice Mayor Ernie Shroud recommended, and what was also recommended here by, I think it was Counselor Thompson, or it might have been Counselor Lampkin. Several years ago, I proposed the permanent base adjustment, and in a way, I'm glad we didn't accept that, because we've got a lot of things going on right now with regard to addressing the traffic. But I do believe we can't just throw it away, and I like the idea of putting the PBA in 2020 and go with the override if we need it in May. So that's kind of what I'm, the angle I'm taking.
Okay, so my turn, I guess. So I agree with Counselor Lampkin, Counselor Thompson, Counselor Williamson, Counselor Jabl, Counselor Martinez. I don't think we want to be in a hurry, and the city manager. We don't want to be in a hurry to either take somebody else's number that we have not vetted at all. And the fact that the Auditor General has accepted it, as far as I read the letter, I'll ask the city attorney and the city manager if, how they understood it, while the Auditor General has approved it, I don't think that he has said, this is absolutely the number that could ever be had by anybody in this case. It's one number that he's approved.
It's simply a number that's compliant, the process is compliant with statute, and that number can be advanced to the ballot.
But it's not the be-all and end-all of numbers. So I think it would be irresponsible of us to just, as Justin said, just take somebody else's number without even trying to look at it. I also don't know that we could get expedited treatment from the Auditor General. I don't believe anybody said we could get expedited treatment, for sure. Did either of you see that?
We haven't communicated with the Auditor General in that regard.
Don't know what expedited means. The deadline to submit the analysis has not passed, so.
Right, I understand, but.
We'd have to do that in short order, but I don't see any difference in coming in a week before the deadline or two weeks with some numbers that are pre-approved versus meeting the deadline. Meeting the deadline is meeting the deadline. I have no idea what expedited review means in that context.
And it's still by statute, it's still by statute a 15-day turnaround time for the Auditor General to respond once the analysis is submitted.
We don't have 15 days at this point.
No, that's not to make a decision on whether or not to submit it, but if we wanted to submit our own numbers, the turnaround time would be 15 days.
So by July 9, we'd need to submit numbers, whether they were identical to others or not, and then the Auditor General has a timeframe to turn that around, regardless of whether it's turned in today or July 9. And that works presumably with the schedule that the league has laid out, so that's the deadline. Being early is being early, but don't confuse expedited review with the idea that we're late.
Okay, so it's still timely if we submitted it by July 9.
Do July 9.
So I don't know what the discussion was about expediting something then. The other thing that nobody has really even mentioned that could happen is the permanent base adjustment could also fail. Ours, theirs, any permanent base adjustment could fail at the ballot box. Nobody mentioned that. And in that case, we'd still be stuck with what I think should be our Plan B anyway, and that's Plan, maybe let's call it Plan C, the one-time adjustment. I don't want to rush into anything, and I'm not sure I want to spend city resources, basically Justin, maybe Karen and Sheri's time, to try and come up with a number. I think it would be really wrong to do it quickly, and I think even by July 9 is quickly. What the city of Cottonwood has is apparently higher than what they've been spending, but the city of Cottonwood has not had the double-digit increases in sales tax that we have had for how many years? It's been a few years we've had double-digit sales tax increases, correct? I know the other cities in the valley have not had that, because I meet with them, we all meet with them on occasion, and I don't hear those kind of numbers from anybody else. I also don't know what their spending plans are. So just to say someone else has this and they're doing fine with it doesn't persuade me, because, you know, that's, their situation is their situation, and our situation is our situation. I don't think they're similar. I don't think we can make a decision based on the fact that it's okay for somebody else that it's going to be okay for us. So I am not in a hurry to come up with a number and try to get this on the November ballot. If the citizens' group gets it on the ballot, okay, it'll be on the ballot. It might fail, then we'd still have to go for the special election, so that's where I am. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. With regards to providing the number by July whatever, how much detail has to accompany that? Or is it just a top-line number? We could say, this is the number, we're at now 47.7, and let's go with that?
In part, I'd be tempted to say, based on the lack of support, it might not be relevant. But, you know, the analysis that we did for the home rule was fairly detailed. And again, if the idea was that let's pick a number that at least reduces the likelihood of asking for either a home rule authority, a one-time adjustment, or another permanent base adjustment for some reasonable period of time, I think the exercise becomes more difficult, because we start to anticipate what-ifs. What-ifs with pension funds, what-if with, you know, capital projects, et cetera, et cetera. And that's probably the difficult part of this, is, you know, resting on a number eventually that we think has staying power.
Thank you.
Jessica, did you have another comment?
No, only I did. I don't have another comment, no, I think it was pretty irrelevant.
Okay, okay. I'm just, I think if we're going to do a permanent base adjustment ever, we need to do it right. We need to do a very careful job of evaluating that number, knowing where it's coming from, knowing that our, you're just going to have to base it on some projections, for sure. Projections are projections. I don't want to do that in a hurry. I don't want to do it by July 9. I don't think it's responsible to do that. So we do have another option, and that's the one-time adjustment. That should be our Plan B, or C, or whatever you want to call it. So.
So, Madam Mayor, just so I understand, and everybody understands, if we don't do anything in November with the permanent base adjustment, what we're doing is we're choosing to roll the dice on a two-bank shot, which is not just one, but two one-time overrides. And they both have to pass in order to avoid the disaster that Justin laid out for us. I just want to make sure you understand what you're voting for here.
And I want to make sure that you understand that there's no guarantee the permanent base adjustment is going to pass either.
Nobody said there was, and Plan C would be the backup plan to that. The question is, do you want to do away with the option of having Plan B in November, or just rely on Plan C?
It's not a guarantee that we have it in November.
Who said it was a guarantee?
Well, you keep saying that's it, and that's not it, to my mind.
Just tell them, yes, we understand.
Yes, we understand.
That's all we need to do.
Okay, one more comment.
All I, notwithstanding anything anybody has said so far, Cottonwood City Council voted 4-3 Monday to adopt the city's competitive budget with an expenditure limit of $69,528,000. So this is $3 million more from last year's budget, so that's it.
The other thing, Mayor, I'd like to ask one thing. If we have to have this information, if we have to have this information by July 9, that means staff has to, would have, if we agreed to this, we don't have a council meeting between then and then, between then and now. Our next council meeting is July 10 or 11, if it's a work session.
Yes, we'd have to have a special meeting, yes.
Right, but that gives even less time for staff to come up with a really good.
Yeah, well, I don't think a day or two makes any difference to me, frankly. I just don't think we have time to evaluate.
I agree.
Thoroughly enough. So I guess the answer is yes, we all understand. Okay? So unless you want to propose a motion.
There's no action needed on this.
Just interest.
No, I said unless. Unless somebody wants to propose a motion.
It's not on the agenda. Can't do it anyway. It's not on the agenda before.
Oh, it's true, the permanent base adjustment isn't, is it?
Irrelevant.
It would be covered?
Uh, I'm not so sure about that.
Okay, it wouldn't, we'd have to just have a.
We couldn't go on anyway.
All right.